Ladies and gentlemen, we are ready to get started. Alright, good evening. My name is Amy Metize and I am the Internal Communication Manager for School District 49. And once again, so excited to be here tonight to share a fantastic 49 segment. Tonight, we are going to be celebrating around a theme of a commitment to excellence. We're going to be honoring individuals who show care, who show respect, and who are also dedicated to quality work every day. We have four honorries for tonight. Two of those individuals are people who work out in our buildings with students. And two of the individuals are people from Central Office who support all of our schools and different departments. We're going to go and get things kicked off with a longtime employee of Firebird Nation. And the individual is Karen Hopson. She is an Administrative Assistant at the school and involved in and supports just countless projects at the school. She is involved with the Parent Teacher Student Association and every single year, very instrumental in planning the school's elementary activities. There was a staff member at the school, Riley Aids Cherry Arnot, who nominated Karen and in the nomination she shared that Karen always goes above and beyond. She's been a part of District 49 for years and goes out of her way to make sure that Falcon Middle School was smoothly and efficiently. And tonight to help celebrate her, we have Cherry Arnot here as well as Principal of Falcon Middle School, Brian Seaman.
Alright, good evening. I'm Brian Seaman, Executive Principal for our management campus. And I am so excited to honor my teammate, my colleague, Karen Hopson. She has been an incredible asset to District 49 through her work, starting as an Institute Suspension Supervisor at FMS and now being the Administrative Assistant of the school. Being back to the day when I was a teacher in our district, Karen helped start the WEP program at Falcon Middle and of where grant funds for the Link Group program to start at Falcon High as well. Today, she ensures my schedule is always up to date and I'm headed to where I need to be and when I need to be there. She reminded me to be there tonight at 5:45. Every day, she communityally positively with community members, works to engage parents and community members productively in all aspects of our school. She's passionate about PTASA helping to ensure FMS and other schools in the entire district have a positive representation within this organization. Karen is someone that keeps kids first. In her philosophy of everything that she does, she looks for new opportunities that'll provide cool opportunities for students. She advocates for staff to work with her staff members, have what they need at all times. I have never not heard her say, "What do you need? How can I help?" She's advocated for District 49 as a whole throughout the community and worked to ensure that everyone is engaged to help with key issues impacting our schools. As a military veteran herself, she organizes care packages that can be sent to soldiers deployed that are related to students at FMS. She also organizes our whole school's veterans day program. We do assembly to teach students about veterans day and invite them to participate in our class groups. So it's my honor to help recognize someone that I've known ever since my start in education, someone that has had a lasting impact on our district, community, and schools, and someone who I'm sincerely going to miss next year in her retirement. Congratulations to Karen Hopson.
Oh, gosh. It's kind of, I don't know, it's interesting that earlier I would be at this point because you're looking at retirement because when I started at Falcon Middle School, it was something to do when my daughter was there and I retired because instead from the military and I couldn't sit at home because I'm not that type of a person. And she's now thirty and I'm still there working in the middle school. But I love Falcon Middle School. I love the culture, which is why I stay there. I love that the district has allowed Brian to stay there as long as he has because I went through quite a few principals and couldn't train them to leave. When he actually got to college, I told him, "No, you have to stay on or they leave here." So it's just been incredible to see the growth that Falcon has made. And I just appreciate the recognition that Cherry put me in for because I feel like I just go work and do my job. And I love it so I don't feel like it's a job because I care and I do want to do it for the students and for the staff. So, and then Karen, when she was there. I just appreciate the work. So thank you very much for the opportunity to all finish my year out strong. Oh, yeah.
Actually Karen, I just want to say thank you very much. You've given her a rich honor. Sorry you're retiring, but did you finish training right at the 40?
Yeah, I just don't cut down the pimper.
You're one of the first people I met outside of my little enclave at Stetson. And I have been honored to know you and to connect with you both through Central United Methodist Church, through the DAC, and work we should have done in that. And then also you inspired me with Firebird Nation. I think of Firebird Nation, I think of you. And that shows that you care about the kids, you care about the community. I'm honored to know you and especially with your military connection as well and knowing that you make the Veterans Day experience at Falcon Middle School just makes me know that you care so much about all of the students and helping them to learn, helping them to grow. And that was thirty years. Wow. You're wonderful.
I just want to say that I have seen firsthand how busy you are with coordinating care packages and coordinating things for students and making sure that we have the absolute best which truly embodies what we say a Firebird and now what a Falcon should look like. So I just want to tell you thank you for everything you've done and I hope you enjoy your retirement and come visit us in my school. We have an offer.
Thank you so much to your service to our students and community, but also to your service to our nation. There's two volunteer opportunities for you.
Congratulations to Amy Metize. Our next honorary for tonight is another staff member who works directly with our students and works very hard. Kevin Westmoreland. He's a very professional at Peak Education Center. And his nominations share that Kevin is quiet, but yet influential as those staff and students seek him out for assistance, conversation, and even a good laugh or a hug. So if you're going to tell us more about Kevin and his contributions at Peak is the Dean of Students, Karen Seaman.
So Kevin has been a member of the Peak Team since its inception in the little modulars behind Sand Creek High School. He's been instrumental in leading students and staff in the growth and development of our Peak programs. He is quiet, but he is highly influential. Staff and students seek him out for assistance or conversation and even though he might seem stoic, they're always wanting a hug. Every day, Kevin models the interrods of our cultural compass for students and staff. He treats all students with respect, no matter the situation, whether they're highly frustrated or simply frustrated. His interactions with others are filled with care, which is easily seen by the way that others are naturally drawn to him. The level of trust that he builds with students is remarkable. All of our teachers choose to be accountable in their choices. He goes above and beyond in carrying out the responsibilities of his job. From wearing that pretty, pretty pounds, to seeing Kerry Oak with his, to supporting students in the neighborhood school and if they transition back and they just need a face to be recognized. District 49 and the Peak are very fortunate to have Kevin on our team. It is my honor to recognize Kevin Westmoreland for a fantastic 49. Kevin will be gone.
We really don't have that much to say, but three days. To recognize this is, when I first heard about it, I was confused, like, why? Because I normally, like, I just go on about my day, you know what I mean? But when I just read the email and Ms. Sanders, you know, told me and stuff, it was just like, wow. Like, okay, it took me a few days to go ahead and process everything. But this, you know, this award, this recognition is just, is very humbling, very, very humbling. Because like I said, I'm a normal little girl. But yes, I care about the kids, you know, first and foremost, you know, they come first. Ms. Sanders, sorry, this little emotional. So sorry. Mama, she's asked for like three, three years, you know. The question that I have today, if y'all would have known me three years ago, four years ago. Never seen you up here now, it's like not today, not like that. But I, I, obviously it's all Lord God for one. But she, seriously, y'all, like, without her being, even how the way that she is, I wouldn't be coming out. Mama wouldn't see me today, trust. Mama, tell a quick little story where it all started from. It was about a year and a half ago, or close to two years ago, there was this, there was this student. He was escalated and he put his hands on me. He pushed me. He walked out. He went to Sanders' office. I told Sanders, I told Sanders what had happened. I leave, I leave her office, I leave her office and I turn the corner and I hear this student, he said, "He put his hands on me." And this was, this was the first year that we were in, after the Mohawk building. And this was my first year knowing or getting to know Sanders, okay? So I hear, I hear the student, he says, "Well, he put his hands on you." I immediately turned, I immediately turned to him, ran to Sanders' office and I was like, "You're a liar." Like, you're a liar. Sanders says, "Kevin, you need to leave. You need to go." I said, "No, he's lying to me" because he's lying. I didn't put my hands on him or anything like that. And she says, "Kevin, you need to leave." So I finally left. She said, "I'll talk to you after when Paul's setting up." Well, you know, some minutes had passed or whatnot. The student ended up apologizing to me and Sanders called me to her office. Now, my thing is, I'm just not knowing my boss or whatever and a kid says, "Well, he put his hands on me." Well, my thing is, I'm gonna be fired. Do you know what I mean? And she's gonna believe the student like that, that, that just didn't happen. So that's what made me ask her, because he, he has said, you know, I had put my hands on him when that wasn't the case. So anyway, when we was, when she was talking to me, she says, "Kevin, I needed you to leave because, I needed you to, I needed you to leave because he wasn't gonna tell me the truth if you were still on the road." And she, and she said, "I never for one second believed that you put your hands on a kid." And I'm like, oh, okay. And then she says, "He told me the truth that he didn't, he didn't put his hands on. You didn't put his hands on him." He was just afraid he was gonna be in trouble, so on and so forth. And that particular moment, because I don't, I don't trust people. That's just, that's just me. I don't trust nobody. But she said, "Kevin," she's like, "I got your back." No, no, my, I didn't have my back like that. But she had told me, "I got your back. Don't worry about it. I knew he was lying. I knew you weren't gonna put your hands on a kid." So on and so forth. So from that point going forward, I absolutely trusted her. And from, and also from that point, that's when I started opening up a little bit. And, you know, two, two years later, I mean, boom, here I am, you know. And I'm still alive, I'm still, you know, me, but she allows me to do my job the way that I know I do it, you know what I mean? Like she's, I just, I just do my job. That's all, that's all I consider myself doing is just doing my job. And I do alright, so. Thank you, thank, thank you.
You and I know each other.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
I knew you were here. I knew this, but I didn't know this was happening. And I appreciate you sharing that with us. Kevin is a part of Living Word Ministries International. We share space at our church, Prince Beeston and Galley Wood. And my, my thing that I see in Kevin almost every Sunday is servant leadership. He helps out with the audio visual for Living Word Ministries International. And his commitment to his faith and his commitment to support and encouraging that ministry is wonderful. And I see it all the time. And I'm honored to know that you serve in this way. Karen, thank you for recognizing a young man I know and appreciate it in due endings now. And so well deserved.
Thank you, thank you. My sense of self-confidence has been lost in public model. And I know moms and I know that they tend to make us better men. It must be very nice to have the trust and confidence as an active routine and in the school that the students can rely on. Thank you so much for that.
Congratulations to Amy and Kevin. Our next two honorries for the evening are department, our team members that are here from Central Office. And it is an honor for me to introduce both of them because they are Department colleagues of mine. Both of them are from the Communications Department. And I want to make sure to point out receiving that these individuals who were nominated by staff members outside our department, it's individuals who received their work, see how hard they were and their commitment, that took the time to honor them. In fact, it was Dent Higgins from the Operations Office who nominated Sam Dushen Kilrick, our Digital Communications Manager for her work with our first ever District 49 app as well as the website refresh. And she shared that Sam works many hours outside of her normal work schedule to ensure that our digital tools are in the best available and working to their ability. And unfortunately, Dent could not be here tonight. However, we do have our Director of Communications, David N. Perro, to speak on Sam's behalf.
Thank you very much, Amy. I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm gonna kind of follow up a little bit about what Jen was driving at behind her nomination for Sam. We're talking about improving the digital platforms here at D49 and launching the first ever D49 app and improving, refreshing the look of the website, which you all have seen. You've followed us throughout the weeks and the months to see where we started to where we got to. And the labor that was involved in both of those projects was enormous. We're talking about probably dozens to almost hundreds of emails between vendors or type of phone calls. We're talking all types of building relationships with the external partners who helped us bring these things to life that without that, we would not have the final product which we have today. You see and our customers are appreciative. We're talking about rolling out a product that we've talked about in the Communications Office since I began, which was the D49 app. And successfully rolling that out to a tune of, we now have eight thousand downloads up till this point. And we just launched that a year ago yesterday. And so that took enormous amount of work, dedication, a drive, and Sam has it, which led to the nomination for this particular award. Now, while I have the microphone, this is gonna be the last time I really publicly get to have the opportunity to talk about Sam and share a few things about Sam because Sam is taking a new opportunity, a professional opportunity, which will lead her away from D49. So while I can't talk about her, I will do that. I would like to say that, you know, Sam is squarely in that millennial category, if you want to give her, if you want to put it in that degree. And I can say that because I'm outside the millennial category and I can identify that. But what's interesting to me is that when I was thirty-one, I was squarely positioned in a career path. And it pretty well settled in. And Sam was just starting her career. Coming out of college, going into communications, working for a number of industries in Pueblo, but gave her the opportunity to do internal communications, redesign websites, learn all of these things and do all of these things as, worked in her master's degree, teach herself graphic design, and all these other things as a millennial. And so all I have to say is that when we talk about potentially categorizing a generation, Sam could wear that badge with pride because she's a millennial that can teach all of us a lot. So I think that that is something that really stands her apart. Her capacity is enormous. She's a helper. When people say, "Hey, I need you to help me out with something," Sam will find not only a reasonable answer, but a detailed answer. She says, "Let me play with it for a second." And to me, you know, I'm gonna play with something means, yeah, I might get to it in about three weeks. But Sam will play with something and come up with an elegant solution for you that's, that is, that is well-rounded and give exactly what you need. Also, people say whenever they talk about Sam in conversation, she's awesome. Sam, I've not met a person who does not think Sam is awesome and I agree. So it is my pleasure to be able to present Sam with the Fantastic 49 Award tonight.
I really don't have too many comments. I guess I'll just glance at you guys in the room, which I appreciate it. I do want to mention, I would not be leaving School District 49 if my husband would let me move. So I commute over an hour to get here every day and that has been amazing thing. So it's been awesome to, you know, listen to Brene Brown books, but I would like to be a little closer to her home now. So I would like to mention that. I am only leaving for a commute. So if you guys can move this full district, if we can work something out, I would stay forever. So I just want to mention that. The other thing I do want to take the time because I didn't get to do this for the presentation, I told you about it. And I'll be quick because I want my colleagues to have some time. This would have never happened without Dave and especially Peter's support. They gave me the money. I had ideas. We all got on board with it. We're like, yeah. And they gave me the best support, which gave me the capacity to have Amy make it a phenomenal website because without all of the work that she did, I wouldn't have anything to hang my hat on. So I appreciate all the support from everyone, especially Borges, you helped to prove it. And it's been awesome to work with David because anytime you come with an idea, I've never heard no. So it's been really awesome to be able to hear yes all the time or find solutions or get me the money I need, whether it's a chair or a microwave, a website or an app. He's always found a way to make that happen. So I'm really appreciative.
Alright, questions?
No. Remember, I'm not authorizing that that reservation's happening. You are a righteous person in this district and I appreciate the way that you carry about your job. Anybody ever stop by Sam's office, it's almost like you're transported back in time or forward in time. She just, she cares about things that she does. And it's evident not only in the website, but also the app, but also how you treat people and how you care for people. Thank you. In a, in a position like this, you are wanted and desired in all sorts of places and you gave yourself to us. And I appreciate that on behalf of our entire district, the ones that you did that. As soon as teleporting happens, we'll work into shifting that back.
I learned to move C-Dog. I was waiting for the hyper loop because then I could just sing here super fast.
Thank you. You're wonderful and you will be missed.
I've just got one short thing to say. The website transformation was all done kind of since I got involved in all of this and I, so I kind of saw it, that, that, your shiny work there all at once and I was super impressed. I am so sad for the district that we're losing you. I am a Brene Brown fan though, so if you are listening to her stuff, that's good. But the one other thing I gotta say is, can we not have these happen when people are leaving? Instead, let's, let's be, recognize, honor people who are gonna continue on too because I hate to see great talent go somewhere else and, so.
I promise you, I'm blaming my husband and C-Dog. If he wouldn't be in this program, we could have just moved up here. Because this is not a job problem. I love it here. And that's been the hard part, just two hours in the game to get back. And I'm like, if we could just move School District 49 south, like Pueblo needs help a little, right? So I'm just saying, Peter, week, week, if we could get a little south, maybe I'd enjoy it.
We're definitely sorry to see you go, but we wish you the best in the future, brothers.
Thank you. Someone I could see. You're like, no, you're cheating.
Sorry, John. You're all. Sorry. Sam, what was I trying? What did your husband do?
I'm kind of hoping once he's done with the program, maybe you guys might have an opening weekend. I'm gonna hold out.
Yes. Alright, congratulations again to Sam. To wrap up with tonight, and it's certainly someone everyone in this room knows, Amy Brunzer from our Communications Department, the Media Broadcast Specialist. Definitely the video content guru of D49. And like I mentioned, it was someone outside the department who nominated her, someone who used to sit just down the hall and would see every day the level of and quality of work that Amy Brunzer brings to D49. And that individual was Deb Hall. And Deb is here tonight. The Agent Assistant for Culture and Services to speak on Amy's behalf, as well as David N. Perro. So that's it. Kudos for her.
Hi, guys. As she said, Deb Hall. I just, you know, Brunzer's been, sorry, and I, we don't call her Amy Brunzer, we just call her Brunzer. But so much time and energy interacting with everybody in the district, all the schools, all the students, as she's videotaping, and always with a smile. So the amount of time that she takes to do all this, you know, just on the front side, doesn't even come close to the amount of time she spends editing the videos on the website. And always, like I said, always with a smile. And always willing to go out when somebody else comes up with a new idea and they need something done. She's there. She finds the time. She makes the time. And somebody that's been with the district as long as she has, I believe, she needs a kudos. She needs somebody who knows that, who cares. So that's all I got. kudos, we need somebody who knows that, we care, so, that's all I got.
I was going to hear some similarities, Deb and I did not compare notes, but I really have a chance to say that, you know, I've worked carrying a camera, I've worked alongside people carrying a camera, but I've never seen the entire building step up and say, "Let me get in front of that camera," until I met Amy Brenser. And so, if you see the videos that we did for the PQ event of everybody across the district dancing, that largely because they know Amy, they worked with her, they trust her, and are willing to do what she asks. So I think that is a testament to who she is. You know, Amy, the district knows Amy, Amy knows the district, which to her makes, to me, makes her a trusted voice, like my consigliere on a lot of different things when it comes to D49, I can check in with her and she'll give me good perspective, I really value that, having her on my team in that degree. She gets things done excellently, as Deb mentioned, there's not a task that she can't complete and do well, all with a smile on her face. And so, it's a great pleasure to be here tonight for Amy Brenser.
Okay, I know, this is different thing in front of the camera, I'm going to change that already. I just want to say thank you to Deb and Dave and for the recognition. I've been in D49 for 20 years, and both of my daughters went through D49 and graduated from Sand Creek, and I have one that went to the Air Force Academy, and another one who is happily working with autistic children right now, so I'm very proud of them, and I've always been proud of the district. And I love the opportunity that I had as a teacher, and now behind the scenes, capturing those things that are great about the district and doing the positive things, and because we have so many wonderful things that happen. And I really don't know what to say beyond that, but I really appreciate all the connections I've made, and there's just some wonderful people that I work with, I have a wonderful team, I'm never going to miss you, Sam, like crazy, and everybody that I have met has just been wonderful to work with, and I enjoy doing what I do, so thank you very much.
You make this look good. You know, as I watch videos and things that you put together, it's always still clear that you have not only a keen eye for talent, you also have a keen eye for detail, and seeing how things go, and putting the best positive light that you can, especially for our students and our staff. I appreciate that. The PQ video, I'm reminded of that, and then the video you did for Marie, as well as she was leaving for. Just at Amy Brenser's touch, you find such creative ways of doing that, and it's always behind the camera, so you make us look good, and we appreciate that, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Amy, you are known Brenser, our house. And you have our kids, and your name still comes up. You're not leaving, are you?
No.
Okay, you're my best friend.
Thanks, Devin, I appreciate it.
I just wanted one other thing for you. You really helped me fall in love with the district as I've gotten involved in this whole process, your work has really captured kind of the heart and the soul of the district, and I love it, and I can't wait to see your next great work, because you're really, you're hitting the home run every time you go out there.
Thank you very much.
An artist.
All right, congratulations again, Brenser, and to all of our honorees tonight, definitely, like you saw, this is what makes District 49 fantastic, who is our presentation.
We're going to take five minutes, and only five minutes between meetings to the end of the round.
Butcher?
Here.
Krusen?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Dan Weir?
Here.
Welcome, everyone, and pleasure, allegiance.
I salute the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a team as a song.
Thank you, we're on item 3.0, approval of agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Any discussion?
Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Dan Weir?
Aye.
And the motion passes, we're on to 4.0, the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item that they would want pulled from the consent agenda? No. Okay, then, motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have second, any discussion, any vote?
Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Dan Weir?
Aye.
And the motion passes, board update, if you would have the start off.
Just had a great 49, fantastic 49, so we'll just leave it at that. If you missed it, observe. Watch the video, because one of the, or the, the secret is looking at work. It is a great joy of fantastic 49, to charge community to anybody in there, this is my, it has become my favorite part of our board meetings, and it's not even part of the board meeting, but it's such a great way to acknowledge and recognize the wonderful people in our district, and so, that's it.
Nothing at this time?
Welcome everyone to the year's 2020, and the second half of this school year, and that's all I've got. And we're on to chief officer update, back those after chief officers. I had it longer than now.
All right, start talking. You know, here's an interesting nugget of information, District 49 this year is now the largest civil district in Colorado Springs, the largest civil district in El Paso County. We've been growing, like we have been growing, and several years ago, I kind of speculated that between D11 shrinking and us growing as fast as we are in D20 growing, but growing slower than we are, that we all kind of, you know, converge in the 25,000 area, and this was the year where District 49 ended up with 25,800, D20 at 25,600, and D11 with 25,400. Now, of course, that's not the fund it's due, that's the actual students that are being educated. You know, D11 is still getting credit for some other students who are declining enrollment, so they're getting funded at a higher level, but they're not the largest, nor is D20. D20 actually never had to be the largest, because D11 was the largest, and we're up until last year, and then we skipped them. About that. Other updates, as I presented last month, and as I promised last month, we're going to talk about the legislation that we're working on, this uniformed eleven, overall utilization concept, continuing to work hard and put a lot of time and effort into that, and continuing to have good meetings, good feedback on that. During the break, I was able to spend time with the bill drafter from Legislative Services, you know, in terms of actually writing the bill language, spent time with the sponsor and a couple other members of the legislature, and of course, the session got started yesterday. So things will really start, be playing out here, you know, really, really, really shortly, and I'm going to continue to provide that information, because those of you that have spent some time, you know, and know that it's complicated and takes time, and I understand that, and so, I appreciate the time that everyone's put into that, and continue to work with me on that, because it is finally revealing the true issue that has been there in school finance in the state for a long time, and the amount of inequity that we have and that District 49 has been subjected to, is something we need to stand up for and make that correction, claim our right to that correction, so, thank you. I think it's awesome news, where the threat is delivered about us being the largest school district in the county. Clearly, it's a weighty responsibility that we have, and a lot of challenges along with that, but I kind of like being able to tell folks that we're the largest, we're the largest, we're the greatest. That's right, there's a lot that comes along with that, and really the level of responsibility, that's great news for the district. Three quick updates on ongoing actions, hiring announcements are out for Army Security Guards, we get a lot of good resumes and a lot of good applicants so far, and so we're much more optimistic than I was about a month ago, because I was concerned over how much, I guess I would say qualified personnel would be applying for those positions, but as I've had earlier, we've got a number of good solid candidates that are qualified, and so, we'll be looking at doing, what we put ahead, doing interviews sometime during the month of February, and start bringing folks on board in March for the first training, so that process is continuing. Second, update on an ongoing, major ongoing project, the new expansion at the Spring Studio, P-Fec, is ongoing, going well, not having any issues so far, concrete foundation, external foundation is forward, they're getting ready to lay the slab once they get done with the conduits on the car, and these are electrical, and once they have the concrete board, and once the slab is bored, that's a major hurdle as far as being concerned about weather delays. And so, once we get to that point, we should be, a lot of the concerns that we have for weather delays will be passed up, so they'll stop the skeleton, and then we'll go from there. So that process is going on, it's, we'll go on a high level, yeah, if you were, well, mostly, numbers are at the groundbreaking, so if they have a chance to stop by, they will see the progress that's going on. And the last, third major effort that we have going on right now that I want to mention is our transition to Sentinel, represented here. Mary is here, for those of you who don't know, he's the senior sales executive for Sentinel Technologies, he's based up here in Denver, right outside of Denver, where their local offices. And the transition is going well so far, I've had a chance to get some feedback from both our technology, our insurance manager, as well as just kind of pulse in schools, and different staff across the district, and so far, Sentinel's coming on board with a very good approach, and we're starting, and we'll continue to work with them, expecting months in a row, there always are, they took the full reins of our network and network support on January 1st, so we're only about 10 days into this, but off to a good start, and we'll continue to monitor our work along with them, appreciate their partnership, appreciate their willingness.
It's exciting to come into the new year, one of the things that we're doing a lot, in fact, almost every day, we have another Vow Learning Team meeting, and so, the Vow Learning Tour is the Voice of the Workforce Learning Tour, these are focus groups where two chief officers visit with a representative group from a school or a department, so usually that's about eight to 10 people. Those have been just going really well, we're in season two, we started this year ago, so this is season two, we're through about 14 or 15 episodes as of this afternoon, and it's just great meeting with other people, they continue to really, to express real appreciation for the fact that they talk about things, they share things through the Vow Annual Survey and through the Vow Compensation Team, and then something gets done, that's a phrase that we hear quite a bit, is that we appreciate that you're doing something, you're listening, you're doing something. So that's just, I really appreciate the Lord's support for our emphasis, I know it takes us a lot of time, you councils should be careful about that, but this seems to be paying off significantly and consistently with better relationships and better insight from other people, so, that's my emphasis, there's a lot of really good stuff going on, and we are starting into the cycle now where we have, we have at least two administrators that have announced to us that they are going to be concluding their service and going into retirement, so you'll start seeing some postings for administrative positions, principal positions, and just know that we're doing all of that strategically, we get those out there when we think we have the best chance to find us some candidates, and so we start some activity that will increase as we get towards February. Thank you, gentlemen, I'd like to introduce from Falcon High School, Ms. Jordan Reynolds from the Student Board of Representatives, thank you.
Amy, thank everyone, as you said, I am Jordan Reynolds, and I am a student board representative. So in the past, okay, over a month, we went to the student board conference on the, what do you call it, it's a social school? Yes, it was a, it was a, we had the grand one, and it was absolutely beautiful, and it was a wonderful experience, and me and my two other colleagues that we went with, we came back with so much, and we're now working on ways we can better serve the student population to make sure that we're having everything that we need, because there are some things that students see on a daily basis that necessarily teachers, staff, and other adults normally see going on, and those are things that students see and we get to deal with firsthand, so we came back with a lot of good things to hopefully put in place for next school year as to how we can better share with students, and make it a better learning environment for everyone, so everybody can achieve their academic success.
Thank you so much, it is time for open forum, we're going to see if we have any, no, no one to sign up for open forum, so we're going to skip the big, long spiel that I'm usually in at this time, and we're going to go to the action items, and I want to remind everyone that action items are usually talked about during our work session, and then we have time to answer questions, not only during the work session, but in between the work session and when we vote, so typically, we'll go through these items fairly quickly. Item 7.0, may I have a motion?
I move to approve the three resolutions, item 7.01, regarding the continued employment of the chief officers in 2021, 2020 through 2021.
Second. Motion's consecutive, any discussion? And this is basically the indicator we give after having completed the chief officers' appraisals in the early fall, and basically September through October, November, and we give them an indication that based on those appraisals, whether they tend to be new contracts or not, the resolutions ordered in the packet that was made to the public, so now I ask for a vote.
Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Dan Weir?
Aye.
And the motion passes, 702, action on 2020 to 2021, school family calendar and preliminary approval of 2021 through 2022, school family calendar.
I move to approve the 2020 through 2021 school family calendar, and preliminarily approve the 2021 through 2022 school family calendar.
Second.
I've got a second, do we have any discussion? And may we have a vote, please?
Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Dan Weir?
Aye.
The motion passes, and we're on 7.03, action on revised 2020 to 2021, and the 2021 through 2022 Board of Education meeting dates, motion?
I move to approve the revised list of 2020 through 2021 Board of Education meeting dates, and the new list of Board of Education meeting dates for 2021 and 2022.
Second. I've got a second, do we have any discussion? Can you vote?
Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Dan Weir?
Aye.
The motion passes, we are now action on policy and procedure review for four different policies, school board member financial disclosure, executive sessions, notification of board meetings, and chief officer's conduct.
After a first read at the previous board meetings, I move to approve the, to approve the revisions to the four policies and regulations listed in item 7.04, as recommended by the administration.
Second.
Got a second, any discussion? And I believe these are all very minor type of updates. Vote?
Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Dan Weir?
Aye.
The motion passes, and we're on 7.05, action on course proposals at Sand Creek High School to include pre-medical 100, pre-medical 200, and pre-medical 300.
Motion? I move to approve the three pre-medical courses listed in item 7.05, as recommended by the administration.
Second.
And we've got a second, now we have room for discussion. Anything?
Jordan just said something about squishing you, Sand Creek.
Okay, so, the reason I said that, I actually have a reason.
Stir that.
Okay, so, I go to Falcon High School, and I'm a part of our concurrent enrollment program, and in summer, we lost our EMR/EMT program, and if I can get a head start on pre-medical and pay less salary, we will happily be attending Sand Creek.
Go ahead, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I just want to say thanks to Mr. Yoder for his initiative in creating new courses, and at the same time, I appreciate all of our staff who did that in...
And at the same time, I appreciate all of our staff through that, whatever high school it may be. I appreciate the initiative of finding and discovering new ways of educating our students. I think that's real important to lift up the role that our staff plays and our teachers play in creating those opportunities for students.
It's also really nice, just from a student perspective, because you can see what you want to do before you go to college and spend a lot of money to do it. Because I remember last year, I started out in health too, thinking, yeah, this isn't going to be for me. And then when I found out to lost EMR, I sat in class in my bathroom for like two hours. So with that being said, I think it's a fantastic avenue and fantastic way for students to see, oh, I don't think I like this, I can change my mind, I can go talk to my counselor and get out of it. So I think it's fantastic and I hope we continue to do this in the future.
Jordan, thank you so much. That is a brilliant analysis and advertisement for why we have a Student Board of Representative, okay? And why we have a portfolio of schools. And with that said, is if the motion passes, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would be available then in any of the high schools. Once the board has approved a course anywhere, they've approved the course everywhere. So you may not have to leave Falcon High School. But I would like to find out more why we're not doing the EMT program at Falcon High School at a later time. We've already got the motion, we've already got the discussion. Now vote.
Butcher?
I'm afraid to vote anything other than aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Dan Wearing?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Okay, we have no items removed from the consent agenda. We're on to 7.0 information items or treaty items that come to the board, such as expulsion information, student study trips, current legal issues, board subcommittee committees, so we can be up to date on what the subcommittees are, CAC, the DAC, and things like that are talking about. Now we're on to discussion items. We've got 9.01, New Job Description.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Niasma Long, Executive Director of Individualized Education. We are seeking a new job position for a culturally and linguistically diverse education, our CLDE, Community Liaison. This position is similar to our military liaison, similar to our community engagement advocates, so who works with our military families, community engagement advocates who work with our at-risk and expelled populations. So it's really focusing on a subgroup, which is our culturally and linguistically diverse families, liaison between the schools and the families, between community organizations and the families. Just again, trying to show that there is care within the district for all students and all families, so we're a part of our community. This position will be funded through title funds and continue to be funded through title funds. At a time when the title funds are no longer available, we'll talk to Ron or we will no longer have the decision.
Any questions?
A few years ago, it was mentioned how many languages are spoken in our district. If I could remind you by chance.
Whenever Grant guys, our community, our community culturally and linguistically diverse coordinator gave this presentation last spring, it was 49. I believe we're still right around that saying, but we might have gone up a few, but at this point, I now have listed 49, which we thought was kind of cool. Those are 49, 49 languages.
49. And 49, and board members, would you care to ask what some of the top languages spoken? I'll give you a couple of easy ones. We do have English and Spanish speakers in the district, but we also have some other significant language groups. Dr. Lamont, those are.
Swedish.
Vietnamese is one of our top five.
Korean?
Mandarin, I don't know.
Mandarin is one of our top five. And Arabic is one of our top five. So that, right, we just stepped all the way around the world with the language groups that are in the district for example. Awesome, okay. With board consensus, and I need to hear it on the microphone, we can move the job description forward for action at our next special meeting.
Yes, please.
Yes, okay, so that will move forward. Thank you. Now we're on to amended 2019 and 2020 Budget Updates.
Good evening, Board. Ron Sterns, Director of Finance, with our amended budget update. Normally at this time, I would love to have the full amended budget package in front of you so we can discuss that and then be able to jump right into a vote of the special meeting next, at the end of January. We're a little short-staffed, so we're a little behind, I'm a little behind. So I plan on having that package to you at that meeting. I'll make the bigger discussion at that point. But I do have our Fund 10, which is our biggest piece of the puzzle, ready for update. I'm going to actually start here on the.
So we've been talking. So we've been talking pretty much from beginning of the school year, of, one, the adjustments to our revenue with the district, and that's our volume variance. And that's just the different change in kiddos that we had from when we started our budget from what we actually counted in our October count. So if you can see, if you can look over at the screen over here, you can see we budgeted at 13,276.24, ended at 13,411, giving us 134.76 extra kiddos. If you follow that blue line over there, that gives us about $1.1 million in volume variance. There was some change in our PPR, per people revenue. You can see that at the top of the blue line, representing about $27 more per student. So that's generating, we'll cheat here, about $358,000. And so if you can see, I have those two arrows coming down to that blue box on the right, and that's generating about $1.456 in extra dollars. Then the last piece of the puzzle, so we have our volume variance and our rate variance. The other piece of the puzzle is this non-formular revenue. It's right down here in the bottom, you can see the differences in the orange box here. There are probably about 50 to 75 different revenue accounts that we track. You know, anywhere from miscellaneous income to our SED and transportation subsidies and DGT subsidies, preschool tuition. This is where we, you know, the money we get back from the charters providing SED services, stuff like that. And so there was a fairly significant jump here. As I was going through the budget, I noticed that our, as I said before, the SED charged back from the charters was initially way low. And so we were getting a significant jump in funds from that. Any questions on the revenue? Okay, I'm going to jump to the expenses then, to what happened to the expense sheet. So these blue boxes in the square and the orange then tie back to that revenue sheet. So you can see volume variance and how that's affecting the different zones, and then the two internal groups, internal services and internal vendors. And again, that's broken out by the actual students that were plus or minus the cheapest zone. And then the rate variance, the middle column there, I base that difference or I allocated that change by our additional normalization amount. So whatever they started with at the beginning of the year, that percentage was used for that, for the rate variance. And then, excuse me, for the last piece, the other revenue, this $1.17 million, and I went through and figured out where that should be going. So for the SED services that we provide, that goes into the internal vendor group, and that's why you see a big chunk of that going into that group, the 159,000. And then the next big, big piece was some REDAC funds. The REDAC funds were a little higher, and a local that goes into the ITIC zone for the summer week programs. And then the other, I think the third biggest one was our preschool tuition. We were just really having a very, very, very preschool and a lot of tuition kiddos. And so we're seeing fairly big increases there, especially at Virginia Elementary, they've got a fairly large program there, and you can see they're getting 91,000. So I have also, you can see on the left side of the boxes are adopted budget and then 1920 on the right side is amended budget, and then you can see the difference of what's happening. Any questions?
No questions, thank you. We're on to the next, which is the amended 2019, 2020 Char Sum Budget Update.
Right. And so the update I have for you with, for that is, this is our internal sheets that we keep to track, the budgets. And so these sheets represent especially the revenue pieces, should be showing what our new revenue for the amended budget is going to be going forward. We're in the process of gathering all those budgets from the charter schools. And once I bring that back at the next meeting, we'll have the complete picture for them as well. That's all I have for that. If you have any questions.
Okay, so I forgot for the operational budget, the operation budget, consensus to move operating schools budget forward. And I see it says voices. Okay, so move that forward. But with the charter school budget, if it's not complete here, then I'm not sure that we can move it forward.
Well, if you want me, I would like to have a discussion before the vote at the next meeting.
Not so sure that we can move forward if it wasn't discussed here before. So, there he is. What's the ruling on that? If it's not a complete presentation here, I have just questions. I'm under the impression we cannot move it forward for the next meeting.
Well, this is actually very similar to what we've done in the past. From your perspective, from the district's perspective, what we are most concerned about in the charter schools is what is their student count and what revenue rate are they using for their budget? Right? They're making their own decisions on how they're spending that money, but we are making sure that they're basically using the right OCS, if you will. And so that's what these sheets are that Ron's presenting are giving you that information to say, okay, we have just under 9,000 students in the charter portfolio at a VPR rate of $81,000 per student. If the budgets that they try and finish and improve, get rid of by their board, fit within those parameters, then that's the usual pattern, same, then we would go ahead and consider that and for action.
Okay. Do you guys want to vote to move that forward or hold back?
I have a question. If this is the only bit of time to ask it or not, but I mean, in the, in the updates you gave at the beginning, you said we were at 25,800, I think. And I'm seeing substantially less than that when I compare the operating budget in the sub of the charter schools. I see about just under 9,000 on the charters and we were at 13-something for the operated. What would that difference be?
Good question. We have all affiliate entity. I changed my vegetables. There you have.
So what's, we're still counting the OCS as kind of our numbers, even though they're all over the state and they're kind of not really.
But for budgeting, we don't include that in those numbers.
We don't include in our operating portfolio numbers, and areas we don't include in the charter portfolio numbers, correct? Because we really pass that through.
So we do not have the, we have our number one T-shirts printed yet? Is that what?
Okay. So again, question is to the board, move this forward or not? So we asked to move it forward and now it is don't move it forward. Say yes.
I don't think so.
Yes, okay, we'll move this forward. We need to make sure that we have all the complete information before the next meeting, so it goes out with the normal, to make sure the boards know we need that information. Thank you. We're on to 9.04, Annual Review of District Legal Representation.
For every chief business officer, this is, as it says, an annual review. There was a time in our history, not so long ago, where our legal costs were, we required a large, large percentage of our PPR were spent on legal costs. And that was in a different board climate, Board of Education climate. And to go back in is when we wanted, we started wanting to, or we were requested to by the board to say, let's bring this out, let's have specific transparency about our legal costs going forward. So every year from then on, we've done this review. And what we do, the way I presented here, is just to show the vendors that we are using to provide those services and the costs that are associated with each of them. Of course, we have our main legal support, which has been a law firm, and they have been on a retainer basis with us for the last four years. Prior to that, it was more of an actual build hours that produced some volatility from month to month, sometimes it would be higher months than others. And so we've done this $9,000 a month retainer for them. And that equals, you see our total spend this year is $131,000. Now remember again, when we first started this analysis back in the 12, 13 year, our spend was $352,000 for legal costs, right? So we are about third of what we spent back then, just a little more than a third of what we spent back then. As a good testament to the stability, the adherence to strong policies and practices that we've been able to move towards over these years. And this also is less than each of our last two years, where we had 150 and 140. And over that, and we can see there for reference, just to provide some context on what our friends who are at the 11, and you can see that their number there is $563,000 compared to our 130, where we are spending $5 per people for legal expenses, they're spending $23 per people for legal expenses. And they have in-house legal counsel doing that as well. So we are here doing really well. So this message is, should be a very good message, because of the effectiveness and the efficiency at which we are handling this, our business. Again, just for initial context, you see the highlight, you know, on our major partner there, you know, with no armor down lower light, it's kind of the offices, who has been the most, the normal consumers or utilizers of those services and not to price. And it's going to be a change, a new change in business after all. And like you see, charter schools, of course, are a big part of that, of our operation as well, and those breakouts. What you see as well on here in the, in the blue, is what, because we've done retainers, what we've also been tracking for these last four years that we've done retainers, is how do we, how does all that average out in the end? We do that this $9,000 a month, what our actual use of services come out to. And this is the first year that we had a really significant difference to, you could say it's too positive for the district side, to maybe from the service provider side, where they have provided a lot more services than they've been compensated for in the last year. And that would be why going forward into the 20 slash 21 year, I would suggest that we adjust that retainer from 9,000 to 500 a month. And again, that hasn't changed in the last four years as well. So not inappropriate in any respect.
Will you present a, an item we vote on to raise that number at some time in the future, or is that what this purpose is for?
This purpose would be to give you that information and to say with your consensus on that, we would incorporate that into the budget. And that's where a lot of the things in it, the. lot of things that be, be authorized, if you will, is when the, if the approved budget.
Okay. So, here, we would just give you guidance to say, increase that number when approved and I won't vote at the budget.
Okay.
Right. Anybody else?
Thanks for the heads up, and it is a blessing, it is a, no harm along from those there about education, kids, and there's a servant heart in that in terms of servicing that, especially when you look at, I saw the A eleven person, I was like, what a blessing.
Yes. Yes, and I think you guys, you know, again, it's, it's the board, the board climate that's so one-hundred-and-eighty degrees, you know, from where we had been in the past, and that was creating a lot of, a lot of legal risk force in the past, and was creating a lot of cost force to manage that risk, and so you're doing well, maintaining our focus on vision and mission here, and that's reflected in this as a result.
No, the increase, even though I've arrived here, I'm gonna say how wonderful the reform is and what a breakout they did, so I, I can see the reason we need to raise, because we're going, and there's work going on, but I really want to thank everybody in the district, the board, because when I came in, that was, I think we just crossed the highest legal bill in the history, and that was just dysfunction in the district, and I just really want to thank everybody here and encourage, let's be, board is good.
And with that, to thanks our previous board members, me and, and Timmy and all of the others who helped guide us into this position as well.
Okay, so with consensus on the microphone, we'll tell them to include the higher number of nine-five-hundred dollars into the next budget submission. I can correct that?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Guys, okay, now, we are on to ten point oh, other business. We normally don't cover a lot of other business, but I do have a few things. Number one, we're gonna be reconfiguring this room, because we're going to something we call four box. So, we're gonna be putting a big TV on that wall to the public to view presentations instead of this projector, and then we have a little TV next to it that'll show, basically keep track of votes and stuff like that. So, a four box is more of an online process of submitting documents and presentations and things like that, and keep a track of the votes, and the public will be able to see that as well, and we'll have to do a little bit of due diligence for the non-millennial generation to figure out how to or do that. We don't have the training, I believe, so eventually, we're gonna begin with it for the February meeting, that's when we'll roll forward into a future.
But, you know, if you can, if I can be a, it is a, anyway, okay? I'm not saying you're incapable, I'm just saying that I'm, I'm of that very high technology generation, so I may be able to guide you through that efficiently, effectively, so you can get on to bigger topics.
As all the other board representatives members of the city.
Yeah, make it a five, it'd be so much fun.
You know what, that is so awesome, and I really appreciate it, I almost thought we should have video games for you guys, but I'm glad there's so much more than that. Okay, so we're talking. Questions we are asking the chief officers, when I set up this bit, and all the board members, student board representatives, and people who sit, you know, out, you know, in the audience here, is, are we gonna have to change the arrangements? Because right now, you're gonna be facing us, and then to look, you're gonna have to look a little bit more ninety-degree to look at all these other things. So, we're asking people to keep that in mind, and if anybody has any further suggestions, make sure you know, you know, Chief Operating Officer on that, because he's the one doing all the moves and stuff like that. But we might have did it right the first time, so having user input is, is ideal. So, if you can't, like, thirty-nine, ninety degrees, because you've got stiff neck or something like that, maybe there's another way we can do it. The TV in front of us is probably gonna go away, so, because we need more seats for the crowd, that's gonna show up the next board meetings, okay? Also, I want to remind everyone that we're only doing one revised board packet, that's supposed to run Monday preceding board meeting, and that deadline is noon, and for the board, we have to discuss the process to fill the vacancy in District Four. The deadline for the submission of the packet is January thirteenth, twenty twenty, and we've set our goal to appoint by January thirty-first. Currently, we only have one eligible candidate to apply. Any additional candidates, if they're out there, have till the thirteenth to get the packet into Donna, and that's before closing business, before Donna goes home that day. She has to have the packet and be able to verify that the person is eligible. There are no specific legal requirements to be used in filling a board vacancy. We have to note it in the minutes, we close a certificate of appointment to be delivered to the person appointed, so at this point, there's only one. We can choose to interview in a public setting, or we can choose to appoint after the thirteenth if there's no other additions. There's just something for you, for you to think about. If we get additional packet, then we'll have to set a time to have interviews in a public setting to interview all the eligible candidates, and that will take place before the thirty-first, and then on the thirty-first is when we would, either the thirtieth or thirty-first, we have to appoint, basically towards the end of the month. Okay, so I don't know what the weekend is like, but just keep that in mind, if we get more packets, we'll send it out, and I'll start calling, writing down a call to set up the meeting to do interviews. Does anyone, is anyone in favor of doing interviews if it's just one person? So, what's your opinion?
I think because of the nature of our district and being number one in El Paso County, I, I, I kind of think that it's wise for us to move in that direction, begin to set a precedent of having conversation, because it's not an elected official, it's an appointed position, and it's important for our constituents to hear and see, not just on paper, but in terms of visualize how that person would be able to represent our district as part of the board.
Does anybody else feel the same way, because it will contend with consensus?
I tend to agree with Dave here, that it's a good precedent to set to all these interviews, and because it is appointed, just because we only have one application at this point does not mean that we're obligated to take that person, I don't believe.
I actually have to check with Mr. Brad Miller from the Miller Law Firm, and if we only have one applicant with District Director Four, do we have to choose that person regardless? Or if we interview that person and think that they're not fit for the district, can we deny it?
Hi, Brad Miller. No, you, you have the freedom, latitude as a board to make the decision, and frankly, you as Board Chair, ultimately, at sixty days, we can make the decision unilaterally. You don't have to take just applicants, we've established a process to streamline this and make it more effective, but that's not a statutory obligation. Did I say that?
So, being back to Marine Corps language, we do not have to appoint, if, if there's only one single applicant, we can choose not to appoint that person.
If after interviewing, you, you feel as though that's not gonna be a great fit for the district, you can move on.
Okay. Kevin, how do you feel?
I think it was, it was.
Well, we have consensus that we will set up a time and a day to interview, it will have to be, it will be in this building, and it will be open to the public to attend. I do not, last time we did this, did we frame it? Did we, I think we recorded?
I don't think we did. If we do it as part of the special meeting, then we could do that, it depends when you would want a candidate to serve. We'll think about that.
After the, it will be after the thirteenth or before the thirty-first. Okay. The last thing on open other business, and I'm trying to get done by seven-thirty, but we did a board of education survey, and what were we calling that? The, it was like our three-sixty? It was, it was a board, multirater board per from its instrument. Okay, that's gonna be briefed to us as a board at our annual summit, planning summit. Is someone going to break it down and, you know, analyze it a little bit more in depth, or just gonna be able to ask questions? Because I know with our other surveys, we usually have someone get up there and say, this is really what the survey means.
I think our practice has been inconsistent. I know that Mr. Anderson has participated in some of the analysis in summary, but I don't believe he has normally come and done that at the end of planning summit. I think the chief officers can provide a first kind of analysis, and then based on questions or observations, we can dig deeper.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have, I thought it was very useful for me, but, you know, some of how the numbers compare and stuff, would the board care to have someone who's more used to analyzing that kind of data provide an analysis, instead of just figuring it out on your own and hoping for the best?
I would go for a hope for the best.
Dave?
I, I'm comfortable either way, but at the same time, it's kind of nice, you know, because this is, we're evaluating many times, we're hearing the feedbacks, multiple feedback from primarily our chief officers, but it's sometimes helpful for us to get a better understanding, because we can look at the numbers and not really know. But I don't mean to put somebody on the spot like Mr. Anderson, but at the same time, if that's something he's comfortable with doing in terms of just providing us direction from what he's seeing, that, that could work, or, or any of our chiefs, I'd be okay with that, to make this more effective.
I'm not necessarily looking for a donor ponies show from somebody, but I do think that a little more in-depth understanding of how some of the other pieces were put in, because I'm still new to this, so this is my first time through one of these, and I did notice, for instance, that there's four categories of, of responded to the questions, and there, when I saw employees, I just kind of assumed that was a large body, and actually there are only like five. And so, okay, so I'm not sure, like, where some of the data is coming from, to just understand that perspective, and, you know, and then the other thing's just a little, a little interpretive help would hurt, I mean, question-wise.
And I agree with that. You know, if there's five employees, and there's ten senior leaders, you know, is it weighted, you know? So, I don't understand some of that. What was the most helpful for me was the comments. So, if you ever get one of these things in the future, please make the comments, because they, they are very, very useful to us. When I see an employee making comments like, you know, certain things, and the board, you know, is like rating themselves five, it's like, oh, well, maybe we're not as clear as we think we are, or, or thought we were. So, I'd like to see a little bit more in-depth, if Miss Anderson's fine with that, or someone else, I don't care who volunteered to do it, but it would be pretty helpful for us.
We have a meeting with the chief officers and Mr. Anderson, and maybe we will discuss this and make recommendations and take your guidance.
Would it create an undue burden upon anybody to make that happen, or would it create too much extra work for them?
My, my primary sensitivity is we don't normally ask, we, we expect the chief officers and board members to attend that summit, everybody else, it's an ask, it's an extra duty, so if we can, if we can do it at this table, that'd be my preference, so. And for us, we're gonna be there, so it's not an undue burden, so we just have to prepare.
Well, I know you have some expertise as the chief officers when it concerns spreadsheets, so.
That would be great.
Okay, so, we're at eleven point oh, adjournment, may I hear a motion? Unless there's other business, any other business? No. Okay.
I'm going to adjourn.
Say it. Any, any discussion? Vote?
Richard?
Yes.
Chrisen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Dan Weaver?
Aye.
And the meeting is adjourned at seven-thirty PM.